Hi, I can hear you, I can see you.
Great. So, should we go ahead and call this meeting to order? Very well. All right. We are calling the meeting to order at 6:07. It's October 13th. This is the Planning Board meeting. So our first order of business is for us to roll call. I will say your name, and then if you indicate by saying aye, then we will make sure we've got our quorum and that we know everybody is present. So we've got Hal Goodman.
Aye.
Nicole Northrup.
Aye.
Jamie Daniels.
Aye.
Burrow.
Aye.
And me. We're all present, Jamie. Very well. So we do have a quorum and we're good to go. The second item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda as is presented, or are there any changes?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
That's Hal Goodman. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Nicole Northrup, I'll second that.
Very well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's unanimous. The motion passes. The third order of business is the approval of minutes as distributed or suggested changes. And that, those were the minutes, excuse me, from the September 8th meeting of the Planning Board.
I'll move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Motion on the floor to accept the minutes as presented and distributed. And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Nicole, seconds. All those in favor for approval of minutes of September 8th, signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. All right. So the next order of business is the presentation of the update on the College of the Albemarle Campus by Angie from Boomerang. And that was the one that took place last week that Carl is going to put up for us there. What do you know, we don't have any sound, right?
Can you hear her now?
No.
Oh.
I think we're gonna have to go back. Sorry, I thought you were fiddling with it.
Yeah. Hmm.
Well, if Angie is here, maybe Angie could just go through the slides.
I can, and I'm on my phone, but if I could log in to my computer, I can probably pull the presentation up and share the screen and walk it through with everybody.
Okay.
Is that something you want me to try to do? Okay.
Yes.
Let me see what I can do real quick.
You probably know this presentation by heart.
New campus for the College of the Albemarle.
You hear now?
Here it goes.
Yes.
Okay, so I think we gotta fix, um, I'm gonna go ahead and hit play.
Angie, can you hear that?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present tonight. I am gonna be brief and available for questions. But tonight, what I'd like to do is go ahead and give you an update on the facility. I'm gonna start with the schedule. As you all can see, demolition is well underway at the site. We are going to be starting with the next phase, which is a site package that is currently out for bid. That work will begin sometime late in October, early November, once the demolition is complete, and then it will carry through until about midpoint in February. At that point, a building will begin construction and will start going vertical. So the site package will be bidding in the month, this month, and then the building package will be bidding next month. So with that, we're gonna start with a look back on the facility. The goals of the facility were number one, this to become a first choice for higher education. We really want this to be a facility that the students in Dare County want to attend. And wow, with the opening up right now, you're not gonna miss it. Really wanted to create a true community college campus, one that is connected with the building, the professional arts building that is on campus, and start pulling that together, and you'll see how we've done some of that in a few moments. We want to create a park-like exterior with the exterior spaces to encourage community engagement. I don't think anybody will deny that this facility is gonna become front and center in your community. Standing across the street and looking at the campus right now, it is gonna be quite amazing. Our other goals were to design an interior environment that encourages students to connect and gather in and out of the classroom. This is critical for the development of students. It's critical for the growth of the campus and for that campus pride. We wanna have amenities nearby that are close and attractive to students. And we want to brand the campus. We wanna create that community pride and school spirit. These are all the foundations for the development of the design. If you go to the next slide, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk you through some of the historical context that inspired the design of the building. So we looked at, these are just a few examples, but these are some of the the context locally that has driven the design of the building between the Roanoke Marshes Lighthouse, both the original and the reconstruction, the Phoenix Square, the Towne Emanuel Building, the Pioneer Theater, and just some of the shopping areas downtown. We really looked at a lot of what makes Emanuel great and tried to develop that into the facility. If you go onto the next slide, what I'm gonna do is start walking you through some of the exterior development. I am gonna say that we have not finalized exterior colors yet. That is happening this month. We'll be meeting with folks from Towne Emanuel, as well as Dare County and the schools, the school, to go through options on what the exterior design. But this is where we are right now. So the facility is a two-story building. It's contextually significant within the community and the fact that we're using a lot of local-like materials on the exterior of the building. Again, going back to that historical context, we're really trying, as I mentioned, open up and create that community feel. Looking at this elevation right here, imagine this is 64. So this is the view that you would get from 64, looking across the street. Outdoor patio is blending the indoor-outdoor life. That is what makes Emanuel great. You guys have a wonderful environment here. People are in and out all the time, and we want that blend on this campus as well. We just want it to be part of the community. We've looked at solar shading and solar orientation and how this building is sighted on the building, really trying to be as sustainable as possible. We have brought in, you can't see it much in the renderings, but there's a lot of cross bracing that's gonna be shown through the windows inside the building, which is gonna be reminiscent of the original Roanoke Marshes Lighthouse. You're gonna see some of that as well. The patio environment's looking even to the, let's call it theater over here, and how that blends in. We've really looked at how it blends in within the spaces, the roof lines, the eve brackets, making everything as pedestrian-friendly as possible, and then really trying to blend it into, again, a community college campus. If you go onto the next slide, we're gonna look at a few more images of the exterior. This would be your approach, once you've parked and you're walking into the campus, kind of the main front door from a parking perspective. Trying to keep things as pedestrian and as accurate as we can in terms of scale and human context. This is a big building. I will not deny that in terms of it being two-story and the scale of it, 30,000 square feet. Of that, we've broken it up into smaller modules so that it does feel very, very comfortable as you're walking up to the facility. We'll move on to the next slide. This is the approach, almost what will be, and you'll see a site plan in a moment, what will be perpendicular to 64. Again, the building being sighted as close due north-south as possible so that all the classrooms can get borrowed, natural light into them. Again, that pedestrian-friendly, biking opportunities, close parking nearby, all the things that are very important in your development ordinances. Move on to the next slide. And then this is a feel from internal on the campus. As you walk between the two buildings, we've created a courtyard environment in which students can walk, community can walk, anybody can walk straight onto this campus any time of the day. And then your approach to the new building, there'll be an outdoor amphitheater space. There'll be outdoor dining and patio space. You can see close-ups of some of the solar shading and doing the southern side of the building. And really, this is where we want the community to engage on the, on the site with students. If you move on to the next slide. This one's looking at an aerial, so you can get a real feel for the site plan of the building. Unlike the existing professional arts building that is sighted back here, the existing school that is coming out here, we are gonna be running the stores perpendicular. Return the parking, so that it isn't all along 64, we said it's more internal. And development of the site as a community college campus, we want a lot of pedestrians walking around here and try to keep our traffic, our vehicles around the corner. Again, starting to tie this building into the new building, we're building the basements to existing buildings, which is complement. About that as well. All right. So we've got a running sign, and one thing that's really important is the college.
I'm having difficulty hearing her when she walks away.
One of the flaws in this presentation.
More closer to the grand old side of the site. And if you move on to the next slide, just to give you an overview of the facility, it has both a front door and a back door that's gonna face internal campus or faculty. We'll come into the conference area, where we will open the collaboration. Library, access to the head. We've got a table, a log, a 16, a log, a cabinet, a whole fashion. We wanted a next slide. Second, we're getting, we've seen another other fashion. We've got a reason, and after this, we've got the, um, the full ones. We've got the stuff on the nursing. Specific program, let's say, if I want to, on the ground, that we do, we're all kind of program. And again, we're trying to keep this as simple as possible. The next few slides I have actually will give you a glimpse of the interior design of the building. So walking into the building, you can do a feel. There is a, you can see the bone, there are the, there's, there's, there's a path on the second floor. To the left, you can go straight through, and the hallways are built. I find, it's open, you know, down.
Helpful at all for people to at least see the drawings? If we can here?
Hallways and utilizing all of these spaces. The next slide will show you a little bit about walking through other parts of the building. This is the, back here, we talked about this.
Where we started to determine really how much parking is going to be needed by COA on the campus. We began with obviously what's on campus right now and what that was being utilized as far as parking spaces go when the old middle school, high school building was being utilized. In addition, we calculated what is being used on Russell Twyford and amount of square footage and classes that they have over there. Those numbers, we were able to project how much parking the college was using. And then we reached out to College at Alamo and specifically said, okay, this is how many spaces you have at Russell Twyford. This is the number of spaces that you have on the Roanoke Island campus. Help us figure out how many spaces you actually need. As you know, community colleges, they'll have peaks and then they'll have lows and it'll come up and it'll come down. And that's, we actually have a letter, I'm sure that you all have seen, coming from College at Alamo specifically requesting a set number of spaces. We then took that information and also began to look at what are other municipalities with community colleges in them? What are their parking requirements and are they starting to see any kind of parking issues? We liken a lot of your campus to a few of the smaller other communities within North Carolina. And I'm trying to pull that spreadsheet up right now. Melissa and I have worked closely with one another to do a comparison of some of those other communities. Let's see here. Give me a second.
Can she let me know if you need help because I have it as well?
You do? Okay. It is coming up right now at the moment, Melissa. Let me say that. Hold on. Here we go. Okay. So we looked at, you know, what is Wake County doing? What is Johnston County doing? Orange County, Edgcombe County, New Hanover County, and Onslow County. Trying to get an understanding of how spaces are being calculated amongst these areas for their community college. Unfortunately, we can't compare apples to apples because they each are doing it a different way. But there is a common theme. There's typically a number of spaces per class and then there's a number of spaces per office. And the common denominator typically look like about one space per office. And average, there's anywhere from five, six, seven spaces per classroom. And so from that, we ran a calculation. If we were looking at running one office space and seven spaces per classroom with the development of the professional arts building on the campus and the new building, how many spaces does that equate us to? And then Melissa, I believe, and you can fill in on this, in addition, looking at number of spaces for the lecture hall in addition to that. And so with that, that's how we got to the number of spaces. The exact number of 208 also happens to coincide with the fact we have the baseball field that we're trying not to take down. So you will see on the overall site plan, there is a parking lot to what would be what you see on the page as being north. It's not true north, but on the page, it's north. And it kind of has this weird cut in around it. That is because the baseball field fence line fits right into that little hole. And so that's just a number of spaces that it's over what the college has requested for number of spaces. But we think that it isn't fitting with what other community colleges are requiring of spaces on campus. And based upon what COA has as demand on their Russell Twyford and this campus, this is more spaces than they would need if things continue at the rate that they are, plus a, you know, some more spaces in addition to that. That's how we got to the 208.
May I ask a question? Is it, you gave us multiple formulas. So is it based on all classrooms being, there's potentially seven, there's enough so that if each class had seven cars, they could, and they were all filled and they all needed seven cars per class, there would be enough spaces for all the students in school?
Yes, plus one space for every office.
Okay.
In both.
We don't really have, we don't have public transportation. I noticed the bike tracks, which hopefully people will ride those, but we tend to be a not ride sharing, car driving people around here. Just because people are coming from all over and they're adding what Russell Twyford has now, they're going to add programs that they currently don't have in the new space, which I believe the nursing programs are going to be added. Is that correct, Melissa?
They are adding programs. However, they are reducing square footage. They do have less classrooms than they have over at Russell Twyford.
Oh, interesting. Okay. That's good to know.
Yeah, they're losing overall square footage, but the spaces we are providing for are more flexible for different types of classrooms.
It's hard to hear you. I think your mic might be down or your sound might be down.
Let me get closer. Maybe that'll help.
There you are.
Is that better? Hal, I know you wanted to say something as well.
Well, Nicole kind of covered it. The idea was, you know, arriving at the 208, how that came about. I think everybody just explained that and went through all of that because looking at what was submitted, any information we got with all those different formulas, you could come up with quite a variation in the number of spaces that would be required.
Anyone else have a comment? Fields or Jamie?
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Fields. Go ahead.
No, I'm good.
Were you commenting about the parking or comment in general?
Well, we were specifically talking about parking. Is there a thread we can pick up here with parking? We can, we can look at something else later. Are you talking about lighting or?
No, my question was.
You're off.
You got muted, Jamie.
There we go. Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. When they built that first, first building there, what do you call that? The arts building? That was going to be one of six as the college grew. And of course, the, I would think that was right around, right before 2008 and the economy kind of killed that. So I'm glad we're moving again on this, but I just don't have a, I had to take a picture of the, can't see it. Took a picture of the screens, the building on the screen. This layout's one building right in the middle. Does that give us room to expand?
Yes, it does. Yeah, no, that's a good question. So this building will be the central hub of the campus. It has the library. It has student services, admissions, testing. It is ideally the building to be in the middle of campus. As the campus grows, there can be a building to, on the opposite side of professional arts where there's the tennis courts now and the open space. And then eventually, if the baseball field were to move, there could be another building in that direction. That's how we've looked at a master plan development of the campus.
Okay, so there is plan for expansion. And then I would just say, there's lots of other things to get into. I went and got my, if you can see in light, my original Manio way of building. This one's before it was, sort of notebook style before it was, was bound. Just a comment in the design, I saw you had pictures of Manio buildings underneath there and then you had the, your conceptual drawing above. And to me, it just, it did not really, I think, fit the Manio way of building. And that's just a comment. Did you all get all that?
All right, Jamie, can we get back to that? Can anyone hear me? Am I muted again?
If you're far away, we can't hear you. When you sit back, you can't hear you.
Okay. Great. Fields, do you have anything that you wanted to?
Only concern I have is the entrance way to the building. We have enough problems on 64 and that's going to be another cut to the highway.
Turning into?
Yeah, if so, how you going to get in and out?
So the curb cuts that are shown on this overall master plan are the same curb cuts that are on campus right now. We're not adding anymore. We're not taking away. We are straightening them rather than them coming in at the angle that is the loop road in front of the old school. But we are not adding nor taking away from any of those curb cuts.
In years past, the only way you could get there is when the sheriff's department was there stopping traffic to let people in and out.
There is still access off of Upper Lock and Fernando.
Yeah, I know that. I just was concerned about that entrance way. It's just, the other two are fine.
You're thinking that we should access a different way. You're thinking that we shouldn't allow access from the front, that we should move an access for safety and efficiency to a different area.
Yes, I do. I think where the traffic light is on the south side of the IGA parking area is good. And if need be by Dwight Willis's or Jay Willis's, you know, maybe they could turn that to a two-way traffic at the, just that one little section that runs back there so they could come and go. And of course, it wouldn't hurt to have a traffic light there, especially with the, well, I guess, with all the approval of the campground that's going to be in the back and all that. I don't know. I guess, well, that's actually up there by the other side. But anyway, just, just that section of town, Mike could use a little traffic light there. Didn't mean to scare you, though. That's why I didn't have my picture on here. I don't know. I just think the two roads on either side are sufficient. And if you throw another one in there, then you're competing with the people trying to get out of the gas station and turn left and right.
And also, Fields, what you're talking about, you're talking that we're going to have more traffic there. There will be more parking spaces than there are right now. So there will be, you know, a greater amount of traffic even than what we've seen and it's been concerning to you.
Well, I'm as polite as I can be to let people in and out when I go through town. And now I'm going to have to look to the other side as well. It's just, it's hard to get out on that road in that area.
Okay. All right. Fields, do you have anything else?
I want to bark them in.
Okay. So continuing in this vein of talking about parking, one of the other things that I was concerned about, I think we don't yet know how many new programs we'd have. So I don't have a sense that, that there would only be seven students ever driving and parking, you know, per class. So, but, you know, I did see the, the letter from the dean of the college. So he's, he should, I mean, he obviously has knowledge about it. But one of the other things that is talked about so often with this wonderful college is that it's, it's a community college, meaning it's a college that will open up to the community. And so I am thinking about even like special events and things like even, Melissa and I talked about this the other day, job fairs. I mean, job fairs are huge. Every college has them a couple of times a year. But also community sponsored events. So where will all these people park when they come for events and are using the building? So that's another aspect that I know has concerned us. One of the, you know, concerned me and anyway, and so one of the things in terms of talking about the parking spaces that would make me personally feel more comfortable, Angie, and that would be if we could do, you know, I kind of have a unique position here because I'm a former dean of a technical college and I'm a former city council member. So I, I see these two things kind of coming together. And one tool that we always used was this thing that we called proof of parking. And that was, nobody wants a ton of asphalt if we don't have to have it. Nobody wants a ton of parking spaces that's set empty most of the time. I think we all agree with that. But if there would be a way that we would be able to sort of earmark parking spaces that when we needed them, if we needed them, they would, we would be able to use them. Melissa has a term that she had used called casual parking. I think this, this sort of proof of parking requirement would be like a condition of approval or something like that that I'm talking about, not just some, something that would be, you know, well, maybe we have a grassy area over there if anybody wants to get over there. So more of a formal agreement that this will be an area that we can use in the event that we need additional parking spaces.
So more of a, you block out certain areas and say how many additional parking spaces you could get are in a grassy area? Is that what you're suggesting? I'm trying to understand.
Yes.
Because as you mentioned, now the additional sea of asphalt and the amount of runoff in the water, we're trying to be real careful about that as well.
That is absolutely applaudable. I think we all feel that way. But Angie, you know, living here, I'm telling you, parking is such an issue and such a hotspot. It's, it's something that is, residents would have a problem with, I think, if, if we, if we would overflow and end up using the area that they consider, you know, their parking spots. But, so what I had in mind, and I, I did some looking on this today, and that would be the ability to count out spaces. Melissa and I walked there the other day and that's, there was a group of bushes. And so there's a space on Grenville that goes into Upper Lock. And I mean, there's a number of spaces that could be counted. And if we could count those and say, if we need them, if we, if we need them, we can get another 60 spaces.
This is where overflow, yeah, this is where overflow could occur. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's a really great area as well. It's flat. It's, definitely that is an area where that could occur.
So we could count on that. I see Hal wants to speak in the worst way.
What I wanted to add was, there are some products out there that I've seen that can be used to allow you to park in grassy areas without the issue of if it's wet, the cars start sinking and, you know, making ruts in the grass, destroying the grass. It has a crushed stone base and then it has a plastic grid that goes in there. And then you put the topsoil down and plant the grass and it gives you a surface that's freely draining. You can park on it or you can just use it as a grassy area, but doesn't have the downside of just a straight grassy area where if you drive on it when it's a little damp, you start putting big tire ruts in and you're just tearing the grass up altogether. Or if you get a lot of rain, it gets muddy and this alleviates all of that.
Right. We've used that product a lot of places before, but most municipalities, and Melissa, you would have to tell us, consider that to be impervious. Once it gets compacted, there really isn't a lot of water that can run through it. It also becomes tripping hazard and is ADA issue. And so that would be where I might have some concern about putting down some of that product and whether or not the town considers that to be impervious.
Angie, I don't think that we do. So we count pavers even against, there's no like percentage. It just doesn't count against lot coverage. So I don't think that that would.
Okay.
But Angie, you know, honestly, what I'm proposing is more that when we reach that point, or if we reach that point, that there is.
Then you could develop this.
Unless we find us that we're going to be there sooner rather than later. You know, just because the college is so sought after, which is exactly what we want, and that there are so many community events that we're so proud of that building that everybody wants to do something there. So anyway.
I think you want to be cautious not to get in, ever get in a situation where you start building beyond your capacity to park, which is easily doable in a tiny, we don't have, it's not a huge area. And it happens, we have a lot of that. We just have a lot of problems with that already. And if there's anything we can do as a planning board to try to alleviate that future problem, that's our job. So we really need to, we might sound like we're really going over this, but that's our job to do that.
So we've talked about parking and we've had some conversation about sort of the in and out, how that's going to work. And then Jamie, your concerns.
Yeah, if I could add something on to what Jamie was saying, a lot of the smooth architectural surfaces on the exterior of the building, they could probably put something that looked like a Borden Battin type siding on there to make it fit into the community.
So it's probably difficult to see in these renderings, but we do have products that are, they look like wood. And that's a lot of what we're using on the building as we were preparing our presentations right now to go and look at colors and materials. But these are commercial, the rain screen material, but it is, it is a wood look to it. It is very reminiscent of a lot of the materials that we have found in Manio that we're using on the building. And it may look like it's metal panel in these renderings and it is not. And so I just, you know, you, you will see some of those color schemes that we're going to be presenting. The town will be involved and obviously, Deering County will be involved in that and that's happening, I believe, next week.
Cheryl, you're not coming through again.
I tell you, I don't know what to do with this crazy computer. Jamie, any other thoughts? Any other, more comments about the exterior? No, I can't hear you. Can you hear Jamie?
Say it again, Jamie. You were muted.
Yeah.
My headset seems to. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, you're back.
Well, I'd be glad we get to sit down and have a meeting in a room over a table, look at a piece of paper. That just makes it a whole lot easier. Uh, no, I can't think of anything right now. I mean, I hope you're not asking for a final answer. We still got some more review to do, right? We, where are we at with this? It's quite a question, Melissa.
So we, we have submitted the plans for permit review. The bill, the site is bidding this month. The building will start bidding next month. So that's where we are in the process. So in just a few more weeks, the building will start bidding.
And so I'll elaborate on that. In the documents that I sent to you last week, ahead of all of the agenda stuff, I explained that tonight, what you all are looking at, we, we thought the presentation would be helpful so you can see what is trying, what, what COA and the county is looking to accomplish on the site, right? So that coincides with what we've seen from Angie. But in order to accomplish some of this stuff, like our current calculation for parking for colleges is off from what is provided on the site. And so there were some things that when we did a code compliance review and Angie and her team did it, there were a couple of things that came up and parking was one of them. The monument sign is another. And so what we have presented to you all, the town attorney and James, our town manager and I, worked together to craft as little changes to the current ordinance as possible, but still let some of these things that have bubbled up to be very large priorities for the county and for COA, how we accomplish those. So the town commissioners have set a public hearing for November, the, I believe it's fourth or, yeah, the fourth. Public hearing on November the 4th on this proposed text amendment. They are looking for recommendations from you all regarding that text that I have shared with you all. But they will not be able to take a vote on the 4th because they can't vote with the new COVID rules until after that public hearing has been held. So if you all absolutely need the time, you would be able to make, to take this up at a second meeting and make recommendations at your November the 10th meeting before their November the 18th meeting. I know that you all have had it for some time and I hope that you all have looked at what those changes are that we're recommending. The only one that is not, we, we've continued, I've done parking calculations for the last four business days to make sure that we get this right. So the only change that I have as a recommendation to you all from my staff report that I first sent is that rather than change the square footage requirement, that our ordinance mirror what a lot of other communities have, which is kind of that formula, that formula that is one space per class, I mean, one space per office, seven per classroom, and then four seats or four, one car for every four seats in the auditorium. So, and that gets us to the targeted number of, of spaces that are planned for on the campus. So, and that's the only thing that is different than what was presented to you all in your agenda packet.
Was this the 413? The, because you have, on the document I'm looking at, it says required spaces 413, proposed spaces 208.
No. So that, that is based on the current ordinance, which is based on square footage. And so I thought, and Angie may not know this, but I went an extra step because, you know, COA is in Elizabeth City and I went there for my floodplain manager class and there was plenty of parking. So always. And so I thought, well, I'll just look at what Elizabeth City's requirements are because COA is already operating there. And so I shared that with you last week. And, and their ratio is seven per classroom. So it's on par with, with what Angie was recommending from Edgcombe County. And I think of all the counties that were in the table that Angie offered that I shared with you all, Edgcombe is most like us. I mean, Wake, Orange, some of those are more urban places. But I think, you know, we are, are on par maybe mostly with, with Edgcombe. So that, that seven number came there too. So I was able to find two relevant examples. Angie found one, I found the other, where that seven number came from. But basing it on square footage kind of seems arbitrary because it's not done that way in other places. So I don't know what your preference is. It's later on the agenda to consider this, this text amendment proposal. But we do have some wiggle room in our, in our, our schedule, but these are all important conversations and I don't want to discount that. You all will be, be expected to approve a zoning permit at some point. So we need to have these conversations to work through some of these kinks and, and we'll continue to do that. We have not yet done technical review and of course, maybe delayed a few more days on that. I've been working my way through the plans for things that are relevant to zoning, like parking and lighting. And so far, other than, you know, what we have recommended here with this text amendment. And so far, other than, you know, what we have recommended here with this text amendment, you know, I don't see any major red flags. So I hope that answers the question.
Yes, Melissa, thank you.
Follow up what Melissa was saying about the square footage. After looking at the renderings of the building, I think you definitely don't want to try and do that. There's a lot of open space in that building, the library and the center court, interior courtyard area. That's just open space, and that would throw the parking way out of whack if you do it on square footage basis.
Angie, we don't need to have a code change or anything like that to have that earmarked extra parking spaces. That can just be an agreement. So we don't need to, we don't need to change the code. I mean, we can still use this formula just so we'd have an agreement that, you know, at some point, if we ever needed it, we could do it.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Angie?
Well, from Melissa, we, we still have technical review to do. You said that?
Well, staff do, yes. So Fred and our utility superintendent, and then the, it's, it's weird because usually the county would do the building plan review, but because we have the level three inspector, Fred has graciously agreed to do the review for that. So we'll be using Fred, but the county will be using their fire marshal for that portion, that portion of the review, and then utility, and then zoning.
Okay, I was just thinking lighting plan. Where does that fall in?
Zoning, it's mine.
Okay.
And, and I, I looked at it today. I've got a couple of notes for Angie that I'll follow up with her later, but it's, it's very close to compliant.
Good.
Good, good.
Anybody else have anything to say?
No, it's great. It's going to be such an exciting, that building is going to be so important for Manio. It really is. I mean, it's really exciting.
Really, Angie, it's true. I have to echo just what Nicole is saying, and that is, it is such a vast improvement of what we've had in that space for, for a long time. It will be such a fresh face to have there. It will change the look of that. So anyway. Yeah, so, no, these are comments. We're the, we're the planning board. It's, it's our job to kind of look for things that, you know, get all the wrinkles out. So please don't feel like we're being negative. I think we're all very, very happy, happy, happy.
Yeah, it's going to be the, I think it's going to be the, you know, the center of Uptown now, you know, you'll say, you know, which side of the, you know, which side of the college are you on? It's going to be a real landmark. So I hope you don't think it would be a nitpicky, we're just trying to get it right because it's going to be a big, big part of our town for a long time. So I want to make sure, you know, all the details are, are where they should be because it's something we're going to be real proud of, and we thank you for working on it.
Yeah, that's right.
Great to work with Angie, just great to work with.
Well, feel free to, any additional questions, y'all pass those along to Melissa, and she and I will talk.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you.
Bye.
So the next thing on the agenda is number four. It's a quick report on the plan update working group. And let's see here. Right. So the reason I thought this was important, I hope you can hear me, I better, you get my nose right in your face. My apologies for that. But as I mentioned, Hal and I have been a part of this group from the beginning. Hal started right out of the chute in July 2019, and then kind of handed over the baton to me in February. But we both have been the chairs of this. So I really wanted everybody to have an overview. So, oh, also Jason Borland, who is a member of this group, is sort of a liaison to the Board of Commissioners. He, he has lots of comments that he provides us with as we're working on this. So I just wanted you to know that we have officially finished our phase one, and that took place from, as I mentioned, July 2019 to September 2020. And so what that means is that we broke into these subcommittees that represented the existing projects that were in the plan update. And so our subcommittees took each of these and, well, almost one we held out, that was transportation, but took each of these and did a really, really deep dive into these questions that the Board of Commissioners wanted, wanted answered. So I just wanted to let you know. So we were looking at that plan update from 2003, 2005, and the deep dive of, did we accomplish what we wanted? You know, what was left to do, sort of, you know, what was, what was unfinished? And then people made recommendations or subcommittees. But the groups that were formed that addressed this plan was Wayfinding, the Waterfront, Education, and the College of the Elbe Marl, Downtown, Open Space and Stormwater, Village Neighborhood Improvements, Commercial Development on the Main Highway, the Maritime Village Open Air Museum, which had been recommended, and then housing, affordable housing. So those were all the areas that we really looked at. So, and everybody came in, each of those subcommittees came in with, you know, their own report. They were all different, which is going to be a great challenge for our wonderful planner in terms of creating, in creating a preliminary report. So on our phase timeline, if you can see this. So we have, we state that in the fall of 2020, so within the next couple of months, there will be this preliminary report that will go to the Board of Commissioners. Then after that, we'll start on phase two. And phase two is great because phase two is actually where we bring in a consultant to help us with this really important aspect, and that is called public participation process. And that's where all these topics that we did this deep dive on will be reviewed, looked at, and with the public. And then phase three, and that is July 2021 till July 2022, we'll continue with that public process. And then what we'll do is we'll roll this plan update work into the required comprehensive plan process. And then the last thing will be the Board, the Board of Commissioners' approval of, of all of that, and it will be adopted in July. So I did want everybody to know, I mean, Hal has been so much a part of this. Nicole has come in from time to time. So much work was done, hard, hard work was done by the citizen group. And I just found their dedication to this phase one very useful, very helpful. So that's my report. Are there any questions about, about that group? No, good. Okay. So the next item on the list. Melissa, we don't have anyone besides us here, do we? There is no, there's no public comment period? Oh, there are, okay. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is the public comment period. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very well. So I, I feel required to read this. So members of the public are invited to address the planning board. Comment not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole, no one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person, five minutes per group. And so if there's anyone out there who would like to address the planning board, I think you can do star nine, and we will be able to recognize the, the digits of the phone number.
We do have three people that are connected via computer, so if they raise their hands on the computer, we can acknowledge them. We have one person that is calling in.
Okay, okay. So anybody out there, if you want to raise your hand, it's star nine, right? Pretty sure. And that will, yes, and that will indicate that you would like to address this, this group.
So we have one hand raised. It's Robin Sawyer. And she's allowed to talk. Go ahead, Robin.
I just wanted to follow up with what Jamie said about the Manio Way, and would like to know to what extent the Manio Way was used in the plans for the visual elements of how the COA building design came about.
Okay. Robin, were you able to hear Angie's report? Were you here in time for that?
I was. I heard it, and I did not hear her actually address to what extent they actually followed the Manio Way. She indicated that that was a part of what they're, she, she indicated about the use of wood and so on and so forth, but the Manio Way is very specific about things like gables and so on and so forth. And I would just like to hear to what extent they followed the Manio Way versus they consulted the Manio Way.
Melissa, can you help us with that?
So when I talked about that code compliance, they did review the Manio Way. I don't have that document in front of me where she responded in that way, but I can certainly share it with you all and Robin about what the notes were in that regard.
So Robin, one thing I can tell you is I sat in on the very first Zoom call that we had when we started talking about this. It was with the county and the college folks. I don't know, Melissa, how many people were in that Zoom call? Twenty or something like that? And I, the architect was also on that Zoom call, and I very specifically, just so you know, mentioned and brought up the Manio Way of building, both of the, the one, Jamie, that you held in your hand, but there's also another one as well. I'm not sure what that one's called. I mean, it's all about the Manio Way of building, but there are two distinctive production, or what am I trying to say? Documents about it. Yep, that's one, Hal. And then there's the green one as well that has drawings in it. And I specifically asked that the architect be given those two so that they could see what we were talking about. Do you remember that, Melissa?
I do, and I've had the conversation with them also about Manio Way a number of times. So I know that it is, it has been reviewed and regarded, and that, you know, their inspirational, excuse me, their inspirational pictures that they use where they, where they drew some of that architectural, or architecture were certainly built in the Manio Way, Phoenix Square, the Lighthouse, the, the different examples that they showed. If they weren't built after the Manio Way came on, they are certainly referenced in the document.
One of the things that jumped out at me that didn't look right was toward the, down on the first floor in the center, toward the center of the building, they have those horizontal features. I'm not sure what they were. They looked like metal bars running across horizontally.
I think Hal. Hal, I think those were the slats, or those were the horizontal pieces that she said were actually wood and not metal, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Melissa?
Yes, I understood it that way as well.
But I was just wondering where that came from, because I don't think there's anything that looks like that in, in the Manio Way of building.
What, what is the architectural function of it?
Yeah, well, that, that, I mean, you know, it just doesn't match the appearance of anything in town.
That's where she was talking about the, the solar, the way they sided the building.
Trying, trying to do that to diffuse the light, so you don't have direct sunlight coming in, which still had lighting.
That's right.
But that's, that's something that's a whole lot newer than the Manio Way. Start dealing with solar issues.
Leeway do we have with the exterior? I mean, what kind of, if, if we have these questions, is there anything that can be done about it?
I honestly don't know that they answered it.
Do you think it's partly that, it used to be that they would do a rendering like an actual building that you could look at, an architectural, and now it's three dimensional, and the materials all look, it does look non-traditional and sort of futuristic. I think that's, and it's very difficult to envision the material she said she was going to use because Jamie and Robin said, it doesn't look like, when you look at that three dimensional, the CAD thing that they created, it doesn't, you can't visualize a traditional Manio Way of building, building at all. And I think that's what people really, because the downtown looks beautiful because it was in that style, and they don't want to build a huge building that's the centerpiece of town that takes away from that tradition that you've stuck with. It's really pretty critical.
Yeah.
Got me was they had,
Go ahead.
They had, I'm sorry, what got me was they had four examples on the bottom of the page, and then, you know, a picture of their conceptual drawing. I didn't see where the examples were carried over into the drawing, if it was just the building as, as is, but to say that you carried over these, these, these architectural things. I didn't see anything Edwardian, like the Pioneer Theater or, or anything like that. I thought the board and batten was a symbol of a lot of that. There was, it didn't look like it was, when I say we want to be in the Manio Way, that, that we're talking about completely changing it, but just a simple, some simple changes like board and batten siding for part of it would, would, would go a long ways, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
I didn't think it was that far off. I don't think it was completely alien.
But, you know, there's a lot they can do without really changing the building.
Yes.
Put a facade on it in a way that matches up better with what's in town.
Did the Board of Commissioners, did anyone make comments after her presentation? I don't remember hearing anything. Did anyone say anything on the board in this vein?
Jamie.
Okay. Can you take our concerns, Melissa, about this? I mean, what, what could we do about this? About our concerns about the Manio Way of building?
I'm not sure, but I can check with the town manager and town attorney.
I'm sorry.
We can play them the, this recording so they can hear it directly.
Because part of the problem is if we approve it, it's something that a lot of people in town don't like, we're going to get a lot of flack for it. And, you know, since we did raise the issue, we need to follow it through and make sure that, you know, everything we can do is done so that people aren't upset when it starts going up and they say, how did this get into town? Doesn't look right.
Sure. They're all great comments.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I, I want to be clear, though. Tonight is not your approval of the, of the plans. So that'll happen most likely in December. Tonight was, what, what you have further down in your agenda is to review that text amendment that you've been presented with.
That's understood, but I'd hate to see them get too far along with everything on their final drawings and, and then all of a sudden, hey, this doesn't, doesn't look like it fits into town. We got to change this. Better to let them know now that they might have to do something instead of later on after they have a timeline.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so Melissa will be our spokesperson. Thank you. Okay, very well. Now, Robin, did you have anything else? Robin?
Yes, just one last question.
Okay.
I noted that, and I, I understood her to say that the building was designed to be perpendicular to 64 to take advantage of sunlight and so on and so forth. But again, that would go against the plant, the the 20-year plan in which we said parking would be on 64 and that the building would be behind the parking. So I'm just, that's a curiosity as well because that is not in accordance with the 20-year plan that we are now in the process of updating.
Well, I think we're in the process. I don't think we have, anything has not yet been approved. I mean, we still have that whole long public process to go through and, you know, approval by the Board of Commissioners. So nothing that we've done yet has been approved.
No, it's in the, it's in the old plan, in the old plan.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Parking is on 64 and the building is behind it. So that's just another point to be made as to whether or not we are going to vary from what we said in that plan that is still in existence.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Robin.
I do remember something about that from a while back that was not to have that sea of parking and then a building. So it was the, the idea was to either have parking behind or to the side of a building. So you didn't have a, you know, you turn off the highway into a giant parking lot, then a building. I'm sorry, I'm doing with my hands and y'all can't see. So you have, you know, the highway, then a giant parking lot, then your building. So with this building, the way this position and to the side, I do think it fits with the intent of what the parking ordinance, if I remember it correctly, was trying to do was to keep it from a sea of, just to have a sea of parking. Yeah, and green space.
Hal, could you repeat that? I wasn't able to hear you.
Green space, you were also supposed to have some green spaces up there with the parking to upper it a little bit.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so Robin, was that it then?
Yes, she's been muted.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Really appreciate it. And then we had someone on the phone, you said?
Nobody else has raised their hand.
Oh, okay. All right. Anybody else out there? Okay, nobody else out there? Then we will move on to the next order of business and that is the review and recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for text amendment application to amend the zoning ordinance to update provisions applicable to college, university, and community college campuses. So I think everybody has that. Does everybody have that document?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, oh yeah. All right.
Madam Chair, I have it available that also includes that formula instead of parking based on square footage. I can share my screen, I think, so you all can have it on the screen. Does that help everyone?
Well, because that was the first recommendation I was going to make, that we changed that Part II, Section 14-312 to modify that for the parking we were talking about, get rid of that 185 square feet of gross floor area, floor area for parking space.
That would be great if you could do it, Melissa.
I'm having technical difficulty, so I've just sent Carl Woody a text message.
There we go. Excellent.
There was nothing on that first page that was marked up.
Right.
Third way down.
Okay.
There it is right there.
Yep.
Madam Chair, do you want me to kind of explain what the intent is here since, okay. So the maximum square footage, our 20,000 square foot rule that we are all very familiar with, it does have exclusions, which includes schools. We felt like it was important to expand here. We understand the intention is schools and community colleges and such, but we wanted to specify and really build that out. So in this part, we are suggesting a change of adding colleges, universities, and community colleges to that exemption.
That's a very good clarification, Melissa. I think it makes it much clearer. I'm in favor of that.
Do you want me to keep going?
Yes, please.
Are we supposed to, yeah, should we do like thumbs up and just keep talking?
I'm looking at my screen. Okay, so the next one is with the changes that I recommended to get us to that number of 200, I think this actually gets us to 206, but there are 208, so it works, which is one space per office plus seven spaces per classroom plus one space per four seats in the lecture hall. And then the existing language that it may be adjusted during the conditional use permit process was already there and we're not touching that. This just takes that square footage basis away and adds the, adds the formula, which I think we've talked about. If there are additional questions, I can answer them now about that, but I think. Okay, so all of this is down here, newer language. And so exterior brick foundation ought to be red brick if the remainder of the structure is a modern interpretation of the Outer Banks building materials such as horizontal siding and the same materials need not to be used on all sides of the building. There's currently in the B2 district, a requirement for all four sides to be of the same, same thing. And that was something that, you know, is similar, it's similar in the Manio Way, but this was, you know, a concern when, I think Angie and I have both heard these presentations and I mean, Sherry and I have heard Angie's presentations where she's talked about trying to accomplish the wow factor. And so this would give a little bit of leverage there in order to do those things. And then number two, we, we know, again, reiterate that buildings can exceed 20,000 square feet. And then we changed that the parking may be provided between the front of the building or campus and the street and the building need not front the public right of way. And this really, this really gets to that other point that was raised about how parking in the building is cited. And the Manio Way talks about the scale. And so that's the number for the building facade materials may be scaled to the size of a building or a maximum of an eight feet foot dimension. There's this guy in front of, it's a drawing and it's a guy in front of the windows that are at Essex Square and he like stands out with his arms and this is where, and that's in the Manio Way. And this is kind of talking about that issue. And then finally, parking areas need not be permeable pavement. Of course, that's kind of reiterating what exists, which is that, you know, lot coverage is going to come into play at some point anyway. So, you know, and as noted earlier, the entire footprint of the site is incredibly smaller than what is current, currently almost going away. It depends on the day, but that is also changing. Keep going? Okay.
If anyone has a comment or a question. Okay, looks good. Keep going, Melissa, please.
So the next section is that, you know, and I've noticed that they do this in Elizabeth City. On the poles that are in the parking lot, these are not the poles along the highway. These are on the site contained in their parking lot. This would allow them the ability to put banners up, whether it be, you know, a 50th anniversary or a big event happening on campus, something like that. This section would, would allow them to be able to do those, do those kinds of things that you see on college campuses normally.
So I think we need an article, though. I mean, this is just a typo unless such banners are attached to the light poles.
Just a second. Such banners are attached. I'm going to highlight this in red to help our new friend Jamie. Okay, there we go. And so the next part, colleges or universities or community college campuses may have one side consisting of a brick wall or other structure consistent with the architectural, to architecture of the site and appropriate size to accommodate 150 square feet of sign area. The structure of the sign, so this is the monument sign, of course. The structure of the sign shall be designed by a professional licensed engineer. Although the sign or its letters may have backlighting, such sign may not be lighted from an internal source and may not protrude from the associated structure more than six inches. That's consistent with any wall signage requirements we have now. They can't protrude more than six inches. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary here and other signs may be placed at the campus entry points in accordance with the existing zoning ordinance. And so the zoning ordinance does envision that a campus might have different entry points like we see here. So the sign that now exists on Upper Walk could remain. And so the next is just the consistency statement and the rest of the stuff. So that's it.
Sherry, do you want a motion to approve that, to send it on to the Board of Commissioners?
I do, but could, could we go back to one thing? I just noticed something else and maybe I've got it wrong, maybe it isn't a proper noun, but it's under Part Three, Section 8-6.
Okay.
Let's see, exterior. Let's see, is a modern interpretation of Outer Banks building materials. Is Outer Banks not a proper noun in that instance?
It should be.
Yeah. Just going to make it red so we've got what is different. And then before we do any motioning or anything, I do have one. I just received a text with the question of, would the architectural review, the Preservation Architectural Review Board, would they have, would this ever go before them or does it just go to planning and then on? I know it's not the Marshes Light, but it is in the community. What is your view on that, Melissa?
So the site is not located in, it's not located in Marshes Light or Old Town Manio. So those are usually the two things that guide me in sending something to Park?
So probably wouldn't go through Park, but good to have comments from Park members. And they're absolutely welcome to attend the public hearing when this is before the public.
Do, what is the rule on that? Do, for Park architectural review?
I've got to look to Melissa.
And I've got to look it up, just.
I want to say, I mean, I mean, I understand we got, we got written rules, but a very large building and that was going to be the centerpiece of the town is not going to get architectural review, but a house, you know, a block away, 1,200 square feet is going to get architectural review? Just doesn't seem like a bad idea.
That's why Sarah brought it up. She's been on Park.
That it would.
So is the park going to expand to the Long Cheese intersection?
So actually, the corridor committee used to run all the way to the Long Cheese intersection, didn't they? Before that was done away with?
Yeah, the corridor, but it had nothing to do with Downtown Manio.
No.
So in the, in the Park ordinance, it talks about the Manio Historic District. Oh, I'm sorry, you can't see that. And it says, it says, Manio Historic hereby created, bound by the 1899 corporate limits of the town, together with all lots fronting Sir Walter Raleigh Street west of the Highway 64 up to Cartwright Park and Collins Park. So that's the basis that I've always used because that's in the Park ordinance.
But it still would be a really good idea for members of Park to bring up any concerns at the Board of Commissioners meeting on November 4.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Jamie? Not at the moment. All right, well. Anybody else? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble. Can you hear me? I hope you can hear me. No?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very well. Thank you. What is your pleasure, Planning Board?
I think we need to go ahead and move to approve amending the zoning ordinance with the following changes that are illustrated on the screen, excuse me, right now.
Hal has a motion on the floor. Is there a second or?
I'll second.
All right, so Hal motioned to to accept these changes that we just discussed in this ordinance. We had a second or Jamie Daniels. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, first I should say, is there, is there any other discussion that we need to have with this motion and second? That makes it live. Any more discussion? Nicole Fields? Nope.
None.
Okay, then I'm going to, I'm going to ask a four. So we've got a first and we've got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye. That is unanimous. That motion carries. We have an ordinance that will go to, a modified ordinance that will go to the Board of Commissioners on November 4 for a public hearing.
Madam Chair, if I may, usually we would have you sign a document.
I know, I thought of that.
We'll figure that out. We're in a space, so we'll figure it out.
I just saw the end of the document, thought exactly the same thing. So we'll figure it out. We're always in contact. All right.
Through a virtual signature. Through a virtual signature.
A virtual signature. There you go. All right, our next order of business is number seven, Board Member Comments. Let me just go through. Hal, do you have any comments this evening?
No.
No. You're okey dokey. All right, we've got Jamie, I'm just calling on people I can see in this order. Jamie Daniels, any comments this evening?
Uh, no ma'am, just, just thank y'all for putting up with all this. We got it done, I think.
Yeah, great. Okay, and Nicole Northrop?
No, no comments.
No comments. And Field Scarborough?
I'll make it unanimous, no comments.
All right, very well then. Well, then I'm going to ask anyone if someone would put forth a motion for all of us to adjourn remotely.
I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Hal Goodman?
I'll second it.
Motioned, we've got a second or in Jamie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is a rap, as they say. That's unanimous.
Good job, you guys. Thank you for being so flexible today and being available to, to zoom in.
Good tech support, too. Thanks, Woody. It all went really smoothly for a remote meeting.
No kidding.
Thank y'all, and, and thank you, Jamie. Not Jamie Daniels. Glad to have her aboard. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, everyone. Great meeting. Thank you all so much.
We'll have to start acknowledging Jamie W. or Jamie D.
There you go. There you go.
The one who actually does some work around here.
Have a good evening, y'all.
All right, you too. Bye, everybody.